Okay, if we're about ready, I'll call the meeting to order. And I believe Joe has a flag, so if you would all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Stands one.
One motion under God into physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have received an anonymous letter, which is in your packet pertaining to no paid parking this summer. There wasn't any other correspondence, was there, Terry?
Uh, no, there wasn't.
Okay. And we will have a public hearing tonight amending vehicle and traffic regulations. Again, that was in your packet, so we'll open that about seven o'clock. In the meantime, is there a motion? Or approval with any corrections submitted for the May 26 meeting?
Some.
I'm sorry, I think that was Mac, right? Moved and Richard seconded. All in favor?
No, 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 I have a correction.
Oh, okay, in addition.
Under the first line, under correspondence, Mrs. Webster's name is Janine, not Jennifer.
Sorry.
And I think probably, I know some of us have already done a little couple others as well, so. Mac made the motion, was seconded by. By Richard, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on. We all received. Copies of the emailed ZBA planning board and H par minutes. Were there any? Comments or anything anybody wanted to note? Okay. So that is the zoning officials report. Is there a? A motion to accept that report?
So moved.
By Richard.
Second.
Second by Cindy, all in favor? Alright. That moves us very quickly into finance and personnel.
Hi, everyone. In your package, you have the wealth management statement for our retirement fund. The other day, we completed the bank. Parking meter, smart foil information is also in your. Cindy. Any comments on any of those, so we can discuss them. Otherwise, I move on to some funds transfers that we have for. EPW, the water departments and the sewer departments. EPW, we have transfers from the equipment reserve. The amount of $11,000 transfers from the F account. $8,276 and 45 cents.
I'm getting some feedback.
Others. Turn off a fan if that makes a difference.
I just note that the transfers from reserves are subject to permissive referendum. We'll have to publish those in the paper.
Okay. From the two transfers from the equipment reserves to the EPW and water department. As you're saying, will be published to the paper.
Yes, if you're, if you're transferring from reserves, it requires a permissive referendum.
I will move, and then we have, before we get to, I'll do this in full. We have. All of these equipment reserve transfers that will be noticed. And then we have a transfer from the G account in the amount of $15,500 to the sewer department. I move that we approve the disposition of these transfers and the appropriate notification. In the, in the paper as indicated by Terry.
I muted because I was afraid I might be giving the feedback. It was a little difficult, I don't know why to hear you, Joe, sorry. So Joe has made the motion, seconded by. Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
If you also notice. You can hear me, you'll also notice that we have a sales tax report and comparing. Month, month over month for last year. In April of 2019, we had a total for that month of our allocation from the county of $25,959. The April collections in 2020. $17,000, so it's quite a drop. Eight months over month. But not unexpected.
Right. I should note that, you know, obviously, this is something Natsico County is. Watching very carefully because so much of their budget is impacted by the sales tax revenue. It makes such a, it's a large component of their revenue. And Alan Ruffles did indicate that the last payment they received, which was just a few days ago, was down 45%. I think the key to remember on this is that these are really hitting what is essentially the last three months of our 1920 budget. Because the village is on the June 1st through May 31st fiscal year. So that was something we couldn't adjust in that fiscal year, but we did make significant reduction, if you all recall, in our budget as we assembled it for 2021.
Finally, in your packet, we have the. Overtime analysis and leave analysis for your consideration. And then I move that we approve the abstracts and transfers.
That was moved by Joe, seconded by Cindy. All in favor? Aye, alright.
Okay, um, I think unless anybody else has questions for Deb, she can go at this point, because I don't think there's anything else that pertains.
Nice, Deb, thank you.
You've been doing a great job.
Okay, so, um. As far as grant and project updates, wastewater treatment plant upgrade continues along. The pay apps were submitted for processing and reviewed by finance when they came in to review their items prior to the meeting. T E P project is still nearing completion, we're not complete yet. We did not have a pay application provided to us prior to this meeting, so there's nothing to act on there. However, I did send some information around regarding the previous extension. We were supposed to have a letter adding the new extension on, but I haven't seen that as of yet. So, um, you know, you can, you can see that, you know, we are, we were supposed to be complete by May 15th. Got moved to June 15th because of delays in receiving. Some items for the banner polls as well as for traffic control items. Um, and those Mitch can weigh in regarding what there still is to do, but we have not had an update probably in a couple weeks about when those items are going to come in.
I spoke with Upstate today, and they can't, they told me they can't do anything until the extension is signed.
The extension through July 15th?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we're still waiting for paperwork on that, but. From, from the engineer.
That, that is the case, that DOT said nothing could be done after that June 15th deadline did pass, so we are waiting for that once again.
Okay, so ju- just then, for an update, that's where we stand, as soon as, I will send an email out to the engineer tomorrow to get that paperwork rolling along. And hopefully by next month's meeting, we'll have this project wrapped up. There's any other questions on that right now?
Terry, didn't we have the letter, which I believe was sent around to the board? Yeah. I, is there, so everyone received a copy of the B and L letter. Pertaining to the initial time extension and. Charges against Upstate? Correct?
Yes.
Alright. Is there any discussion on that, any information that people feel they need? Okay. Then I think we probably need an authorization by the board to. Have me sign that, and effectively, we would. Have that $17,500 charge to Upstate. It's basically, if you recall, at our March meeting, there was a $35,000 B and L charge for this extension. So it's essentially reimbursing the village for half that cost. Alright, so is there a motion? Cindy, I saw Cindy's hand. Cindy. And seconded by Matt, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as the double day field project goes, um, we have requests for authorization of substantial completion for Smith's site development. William J. Keller and Sons, Still Seen Electric, and attached to those were also the punch list of items that need to be completed. Regarding that, so, and we'll need authorization as well from the board for that.
Richard, are you making?
Motion.
Motion to approve the certificates of substantial completion for all three contractors on the double day project.
And authorize the mayor to sign them.
Yep. Seconded by, by Mac. Are there any questions on anything? Yeah, Joe, I see your hand up.
I, I'm looking at the document. We will have the as-built drawings in hand. I know that's been an issue, not specifically to anybody, but we'll need that. Sure, even all the work that's been done.
Right, our, um. Contractor, Lane Engineering, that has been sort of the construction supervisor on this, has, will be ensuring that all of that data, the village will ultimately get, you know, a digital file on this that includes every kind of. Easement that was involved in the project or license to bury a tank, etc. Everything that was in there is in the one kind of completed project document.
Thank you.
And final payment won't be made to them until we receive the items that are on those punch lists.
Alright, so the motion was made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, thank you.
Okay, and pay apps were received for May and submitted and reviewed by finance during their review. I did have on the agenda, double day field games are canceled at least through July 11th, and startup will depend on restrictions from the state. Since that point in time, we have received additional information from the state with, for games starting no earlier than July 6th. Baseball's considered moderate risk. Unfortunately, there are, you know, um, the same kind of restrictions that have come down with everything else, masks, if you can't maintain a six-foot distance. So many pieces of paper that I shuffle these days. And, and one, one of the criteria is along with low and moderate risk sports and recreation activities starting up on July 6th, except competitive tournaments requiring travel. Which I think that includes all of our games, so, you know, Mitch and I spoke earlier today, and we're thinking it's going to be very difficult, at least for the month of July, to comply with the restrictions. Not only, I think that, that information kind of cuts it out altogether, in, in our opinion. But there certainly are sanitization requirements that would make it very difficult for staff. So I think that we're probably looking at no games in July, see if any of these restrictions are lifted, and then potentially an August 1st start at this point. Some of our larger tournaments are August, September. I think it's just going to depend on how quickly restrictions get lifted for, for this year's season.
Richard, were you asking a question, or?
I was making a motion.
Okay.
I move that we cancel. All tournaments until July 31st.
Or basically, we cancel all our reservations, double day reservations.
I'm sorry, all reservations through July 31st.
I'll second that, Richard.
Seconded by Mac, alright. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, summer parks update is not much sunnier, unfortunately, despite the hot weather that we're having. I would remind everyone, though, Glimmer Glass Park is open for swimming. I know that doesn't do much for the people that look forward to this every summer, but we had six pages of mandatory restrictions come down on this, which include masks when you're not in the water and can't. Have six foot of social distancing, there certainly are major restrictions on staff. Enforcement that we haven't had to do before also, and finally, reaching out to our Onianna District Office for Department of Health who provides our permit. They have felt that our current, current safety plan is out of date, so we have to perform a 27-page safety plan for each of our parks in addition to the COVID-19 safety plan that is required. So I'm working my way through that, we are accepting applications for those who might be interested in a shortened season, working as lifeguard or caretaker. But at this point, um, you know, even if we want to open tomorrow, we, we still have to meet the requirements with New York State Department of Health. We have put a lot of signage up at the parks. People are certainly welcome to go in and use their kayaks, because we have rented racks at both parks, and they are able to, you know, and we still can't open the pavilions, but they're able to take their own chairs, and as long as their social distancing is fine, but there is no swimming. So that's where we're at at this point with that.
We probably should note, I know Jean had an inquiry over the weekend, because she felt like some of the parks were kind of being used, and so I spoke to our village attorney about that. And he said, we are, the best case for us is to do exactly what we're doing, we list them as closed, there's no swimming, and people, then it's sort of on them. It's a much better scenario than trying to hire a caretaker to police it and then having some bad interaction.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the outdoor dining and state liquor authority regulations. I did participate in a webinar with Nikon regarding this, who.
I'm sorry, Terry, I'm seeing a hand wave from Jean.
Oh.
Probably on the parks.
Just to clarify, the parks are technically open, really, right?
Well, yeah, as I said, it's just the beaches that are closed.
No swimming.
And pavilions. I mean, people can, like I said, people, there's no problem with, you know, going up and sitting there, but the beach, the, the swimming is closed, the pavilions are closed, picnic tables are still not to be used.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So I did participate in a webinar with Nikon, and they also had representatives from state liquor authority regarding the outdoor dining and the extension of licensed premises. I included in your packets the municipal extension application, which requires, you know, a control plan. It requires a diagram, it requires a list of premises who are already licensed to serve outside, and, um. Further, I attached recommendations from Nymer, who is our insurer and risk manager, on what they want if we do extend our premises. Extend, extend to our premises. And I'll clarify that those establishments that have already received an outdoor dining permit from us and have shown that to the state liquor authority. Are authorized to serve alcohol at those tables because they consider that, in effect, like a lease agreement, that, you know, we have given them a permit to, for outdoor dining at those tables, so that extends their premises, the establishment's premises. To that out, those outdoor tables that are currently established, those tables are required to be adjacent to the front of their business. So anything beyond that requires a municipal application from us to the state liquor authority.
So Terry, we don't need anything additional from those businesses, because before this kind of change by the state liquor authority, we basically didn't allow alcohol on the public sidewalk. So we don't need to do anything, I know, did, did Nymer think we needed to have some additional?
Not, not for this process, only if we allow it to go onto our premises, like streets, sidewalks, you know, parkland, whatever the case may be. Then it would have to be, we would have to get further insurance from them. You know, the information that was included in that handout that I provided.
Okay, but exactly what we've done in the past, our dining law, you know, on-street dining law that lets them do it right in front of their business, they filed the permit, so they considered the alcohol.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, that's between them and the liquor, they still had to file an application with the state liquor authority to receive that permission. I'll say at this point, as of the webinar, that permission is through July 6th. So not sure whether that'll be extended or not, right now, they have permission to do those in the temporary suspensions of, you know, from the liquor authority through July 6th.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Richard? Richard?
Yeah, I gotta unmute first today. Terry, have we had any problems with any of the restaurants or bars? I haven't, I'm not aware of any.
Not to my knowledge. I, I had an email from an individual saying that, you know, people had noticed people having alcohol where they shouldn't have it. I will say, you know, I have provided that information to the police department, I mean, but I will also say that it was, it was stressed during that webinar, state liquor authority is out there. So, you know, they're going to have more problems from them than they would have from us, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright. Guess that's Seth then.
Okay. So, okay, so if there, if there's no action on that right now, I guess we'll just move to the next item?
Correct.
Okay, so, number five, authorize seasonal appointment of Ethan Russell as a seasonal streets department labor. Ethan worked for us last year and is, um, you know, we'd be happy to have him return again for this summer.
Alright, is there a motion?
So moved.
Cindy and, I'm sorry, I saw Richard's hand, I, so I assume he was the second. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Okay, then, prior to, um, our workforce reduction due to the pandemic, we did have a vacant H M E O position in the streets department. We have had a couple inquiries regarding that, and would like to. Conduct socially-distanced interviews and see if we can fill it, so we'd like permission to do that as well.
Just a reminder, in, just as a reminder, in our approved budget, we have that line, and it's, it's funded, so this is a funded vacancy that was already in our 2021 budget. So McGuire moved, seconded by Cindy, all in favor? Thank you.
Okay, and I also included our renewal for the village's general liability property insurance. You, you will notice there's a slight increase this year, I did have a discussion with Mike Hutcherson, who is our broker through Rose and Karenin on our insurance that will go through Nymer, as usual, it's a Nymer renewal. You know, insurance commercial especially, he indicated to me, are seeing increases this year. We are still lower than what we were paying in 2014, 15, however, so that insurance renewal is effective as of July 3rd.
Is there a motion to approve the 106,503.25 renewal of our insurance coverage? Jean moved it. And Jim seconded it, sorry, Jim, I don't always catch you there in front of the lake, so. All in favor? Aye. Thanks.
Okay, that's it for me. So it is close to seven, I don't know, if you want to open the public hearing, I will say that we, we received no comment regarding the local law change.
Alright, yes, I will open the public hearing. Cindy was as. Head of Streets, composed all this, and so I'm sure you've all had a chance to read through all the changes, what sort of is being removed and what's being added in. Some of this is a result of the T E P project, obviously, changes in the crosswalk, etc., changes in parking places, and some is a result of the redesigned double-day parking lot. But if, Cindy, I don't know if you have anything in particular you want to highlight on this?
No, I, I just think it's important to note that the number of accessible spaces is not changing. I know if you start reading on the front page, it looks like we might be losing accessible spaces. They've really just been shifted to locations that, given our new configuration, actually better accommodate various types of vehicles that might be used by people who, who have an accessible tag.
Right, there are five spaces in double day, all with sort of, you know, hatch, hatch marked areas next to them, so they're more accessible in some ways than some of our older ones were. Alright, well, I'll leave it open for a couple minutes, I can't imagine anything will occur there, in case anyone phone calls you or something, Terry, or you get an email, I'm sure you'll check it. Let me just go on, because I was going to mention, you also have. The executive order pertaining to the. Changes that in policy that the governor would like to see implemented by each community in the state of New York. And I had received this actually a week or two ago, I knew this was. And I had received this actually a week or two ago, I knew this was coming. And it does stipulate that each chief executive of such local government shall convene the head of the local police agencies and stakeholders in the community. And so I had already contemplated the sort of individuals that I think should be on a community group like this, and I feel strongly they have to be village residents. I received a bit of input from people outside the village, but obviously, this is our police department and needs to represent our, our community, our constituents. I am reaching out and planning on having a faith leader on the group. I am also going to be utilizing someone in mental health who employs at Bassett, because I think that is so much of our policing sometimes is the mental health issues. The, you can, if you read the complete executive order, some of this, I think, was really designed for maybe a big urban city or a big urban department where they're talking about someone from, you know, the DA's office, et cetera. I think I will also include someone from the public defender's office. To me, that seems a little more important and will, and try and be as kind of cross-sectional in the community as possible. My goal is to convene this in person, socially distanced. We can begin this in July. As you can see, they asked that the revised comment and adopted plan to be completed by April 1, 2021. So we'll be working on this policy with our current police officers. And remember, we have two police officers at the current time.
I apologize, I'm getting muted at times. I'm losing the signal. What was the last sentence you said, please?
My last sentence may have been that it has an April 1, 2021 deadline, and we will be sure to hit that deadline. It is important to note that, you know, this was a little unclear. Some of the clarification that we have gotten from NICOM is that it pertains particularly to funding to police departments. We don't receive any state funding for our police department, but it is critically important, I think, that we do this in our community and revise our policies and plans.
Could I, could I just add a couple things? I received an email from NYMER, who again is our risk management insurance agency, and the police are going to be participating in a webinar tomorrow as well, and I'm going to be participating as well, that addresses police use of force. It also will provide a review of the new laws and their potential implications and cover the eight recommendations for police use of force policies, which resulted from the recent eight can't wait study. So that is going to be good information for the village. And then on Wednesday, there's a webinar from NICOM that I'm going to be participating in that will review the public access to police disciplinary records, understanding the repeal of civil rights law, section 50A, and how to handle the FOIL requests for copies of police officer disciplinary records. So I will say, NICOM, both NICOM and NYMER are very good resources for us because these are all brand new and we need to understand all the components of it. So they really got this together quickly so that the members of the police force, both full and part-time officers can participate, and then we can understand the recent legislation that came down. So I just wanted to add that those just recently came through in the last couple of days, but where everybody signed up.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Ellen?
Richard? I'm sorry, Matt. I saw you first.
Me or Richard?
Richard.
I don't know how you want to handle this. I do not remember a single problem with our own police, at least going back nine or 10 years. There may have been a problem about 10 years ago. I don't know if any complaints were made, but there was certainly a problem or appears to be an issue of racial discrimination then. That's a long time ago. The issue, I, I wonder, is Bassett seems to have had a recent problem, especially with the use of their K-9. How do you want to incorporate this? Get them involved or just review with them what the rules are once they're in place?
I would say Bassett Hospital has their own sort of security force, and we have certainly chatted with them at times. And we keep them in the loop and they keep us in the loop. I wouldn't see incorporating them in this, in our police department policy discussions, if that's what you're referencing.
I'm also referencing, I don't really think they need to be on this discussion. I, I think they need to know what their limitations are, especially when they start going onto the streets, going off specifically the hospital property.
To my understanding, they do not.
Well, that's, I'm just saying, there was one episode, and I don't know if our police were involved with it or not, but there seemed to be an episode of discrimination. In fact, with the use of the K-9, at least that's the way it read in the paper. I just don't remember exactly when. Maybe you do, or somebody else might remember that incident. No?
No.
Maybe I'm fantasizing.
But we will certainly listen to comments from the community. Jim?
Okay. I am assuming that the village board is going to be part of this discussion group?
The village boards will be reviewing sort of the completed Pam and ultimately has to adopt it. But if you read the executive order, this is really designed to be input from the community and not input from top-down, but from community-driven.
Ellen?
Matt?
I, I just, I kind of disagree. I think that it would be appropriate to have one or both members of the police committee on, on this review board, community board. So I just wanted to communicate those sentiments because I think that they play a really important role, especially working as a committee with the police, Department of Cooperstown, so I just do what you will with that, but I wanted to communicate it.
Thank you, Matt. Richard?
If I read this correctly, in the 123, fourth paragraph, it specifically says, "and local elected officials." So I think, I, I agree with Matt. I think Jean and I should be on this panel. We've been involved with it, we've been reviewing these records, and I really do think the members of the police police committee should be involved.
These are all people that could be on it, and as I said, it includes the office of the district attorney, the local public defender, nonprofit organizations, et cetera. So it is convened by me, and I certainly may include another elected official, but I also want to reflect more our community, and I really want it to be someone from the faith community, someone from the mental health community, someone who defends people who don't have the ability to hire their own lawyer, who interact with our police department on a, that level. So I will certainly take that all into consideration when I compose the, the committee. Jim?
I, I also want to, I agree with Richard. I just want to say that since the police work for the village board
Yeah.
and we control the money that pays them, I think at least the, you know, the, the police committee members should participate. You know, I think with the mayor and two members, Richard and Jean does not seem unreasonable to me.
All right, I will certainly take that into consideration. The, the point I do want to reemphasize is we have two officers, which actually our police department is more diverse than our board right now. And so I don't want to overweight it from the top down. I really want it to be a community-up sort of policy development. Joe?
Yes, thank you. This conversation is so fascinating to me because we are considering it from a relatively intimate village perspective, but if you scale up this discussion to...
Joe, would you mind speaking up? Sorry, I can't quite hear you.
All right. I have my volume up full, is that okay? Still not good?
I can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So if we scale this discussion up from our village to a major metropolitan area and we hear ourselves talking about, we should be doing this, we're the elected officials, it, it's, it becomes exclusive. It's, it's the voices of trying to be heard in, across the nation. That's what we've been seeing in the demonstrations. So the idea is to create a forum without the folks controlling the discussion from the top down, as Ellen said, and give, give that latitude and that space and creativity to voices that haven't been heard to help change the culture. Not that we have a problem, but I think the format that the executive order is after is something that I, I support. So I don't feel the need to have me in that discussion, if Ellen is chairing it. The more people we can hear from, I think the better the process will be for the goal that's been set.
Richard?
With all due respect, I'm interpreting this differently. It specifically says local elected officials, and I think it would help that we have more than one set of ears from the Board of Trustees, because different people perceive things differently. So I offer a motion. Move that the board directs the mayor to appoint Jean Dewey and Richard Sternberg to this committee.
Is there a second?
No second?
Jim seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So there are four that voted for that. All right, I will say that I still have the authority to put this together. I, I would be happy to have one elected official. I'm disappointed that we're going to, again, top-weight it. If I have three community members and three trustees, or three board members, I think it doesn't look community-driven, unfortunately. But we will see how it puts together.
Could I, people just respond who voted aye, because I can't see that well on the Zoom. Richard, Jean, McGuire, and Jim. Okay, thank you.
I also assume that you're going to share it, is that correct, Ellen?
Yes, that is correct, Richard.
I mean, I, I think that it makes clear toward the end that we have to vote on it in the end.
Yes.
I just want to be, and listen, I really want to be in the room and hear what people are saying firsthand. I'm not going to try and drive this at all.
Joe?
I know you don't believe me.
You know, the vote's been taken, but just as a point of clarification, this, will these sessions be accessible to the public?
Oh, 100%.
So any one of us as elected officials?
Exactly, any one of us could be sitting in that room. It doesn't have to be on that board.
I mean, I, I, I regret the decision. I think it's best to make some space for those whose voices this is designed.
Well, I will be chairing it, so if I feel that it is any way dominated by a trustee, I will be sure to move the conversation along in a way to make sure that the community members who are truly the crux of this are heard from. Anything else? All right. Going back to our public hearing, is there a motion to approve those changes to the vehicle and traffic regulations? So moved by Richard, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Under new business, I know Cindy has some info on colleagues scheduling a contract discussion.
Yes, there are two different but related items related to the trolley. You may recall, going back not too long ago, we had said that the trolley would start operating no sooner than July 1, and we are quickly approaching July 1. So we're going to need to make a decision regarding trolley usage. As we've heard about things like parks and double day, you know, I think we're understanding better at this point what the limitations are when it comes to a public transportation system. And for our trolley, there would be some, some big changes that we have to make if we wanted to operate it at any point this summer. There would certainly be fewer people who could ride at any given time because of social distancing. We'd also have to consider making some physical modifications to our trolleys to ensure that drivers were adequately protected themselves. Remember that our drivers collect cash fairs, they hand out tickets. So, you know, unfortunately, they, they can't escape the fact that they are being exposed to people. On top of that, we know by observation, as well as our parking statistics, that at this point at least, there's a lot of parking available in the downtown area. And it seems to me that people who can find a place to park, close their destination, are not especially likely to park in a remote lot. They can take a public transportation system regardless of how quaint it is to, to go downtown. So I'm going to suggest that we suspend the trolley season for 2020. Saying that, though, it is important that we do ratify the agreement with the county. So you recall, the trolley is a three-way contract between the village, the county, and our provider, Leather Stocking Trolley. It's important that we do that because even if we suspend the season, we can still, well, really, the county, who at this point has paid for things, inspections and maintenance, and some administration can still recoup costs for that through the CARES Act and, and other programs that they have access to. So the first motion I want to make is to approve the agreement between the village of Cooperstown and Atsugo County regarding trolley usage in 2020.
So Cindy's made the motion, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye.
And then the second motion I'll make is to suspend the trolley season for 2020.
I'll second that, Cindy.
Seconded by Matt, all in favor? I didn't give you much discussion there. Was there any feeling, anybody had any questions on any of that for the trolley? No? Okay. And then I believe you had something on tree committee, Cindy?
Yeah, the village has received a request to remove two trees on Nelson Avenue. If you had a chance to drive by or even just look at the pictures, these are large, mature trees. Typically, the way this would work is the tree committee would meet and make a recommendation to the Streets Committee, which would make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. As we are operating currently, the members of the Tree Committee went out and looked, sent me emails, and there are no objections to this particular request with the understanding that the removal of the trees, as well as the site restoration, be paid for by the individuals who are making the request, which they are prepared to do. I think it might also be wise, when you look at this information and remember the benefits that trees provide in terms of greenhouse gases and air quality, water, energy, that we might consider requiring the, the requesters to plant two additional trees, street trees, to replace the ones that are being removed.
So that's kind of the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I saw Jim's hand go up. Uh, I saw Jim's hand go up, so Jimmy Dean seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Cindy. Um, one more thing under, um, new business, um, and that is to set a public hearing for a local law change, um, in, at our next, uh, July meeting. If Martin, um, the village attorney, is drafting this, it's under section 240-5 of our local code. It basically has arisen that, um, uh, we want to ensure that properties, um, that surround double-day parking lot, do not dump personal trash, um, on our property. When we did the double-day parking lot project, there was a bit of redefining, um, uh, the boundary. We, we knew the survey, um, there is, as you recall, no adverse possession for a village, but some, um, adjoining businesses had gotten very comfortable, putting equipment, et cetera, other things and trash on village property. So this will just allow us to, um, establish a fine, um, which is pretty much defined by the law, $350 or the cost to remove the trash, whichever is greater. So we need to kind of ensure that we have that in our local law to, um, keep double-day looking as nice as it does now that the renovation is complete. So, um, is there a motion to set a public hearing for our July meeting for, um, a local law into that effect? Made by Jim. Seconded by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
I think that is...
Ellen.
Aye, oops.
Okay.
Terry, you go first.
Okay. I received a request today to, um, close off Main Street, um, Sunday afternoon for a 5:00, um, senior parade with fire trucks. The individual was going to contact, um, the police department regarding this.
All right, so...
What's your question, man?
It's for the graduating seniors on Sunday.
To those seniors!
Yes!
The ones whose banners are all over our, our lampposts.
Oh, I've been working on, I've been working on the senior center. That's all that came to mind. Yes, of course.
Okay.
So motion, um, made by Richard, seconded by, uh, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
And you said that was 5:00 Sunday?
Yes.
Terry, I'm going to abstain, given the senior in my family.
Okay.
I don't think you got to.
Whose, whose, whose picture feature is featured prominently in two places. I found it downtown. I hope everyone has had a chance to walk around our village and enjoy the banners that, um, it was at one time Project Prom, but with the, um, cancellation of that, they morphed into Project Graduation. And it planned a lot of sort of very good things for the graduates in this, um, time of the pandemic. So, um, do appreciate our village, um, in support of the, uh, the students. Joe?
I would also just add a compliment on the TEP project. The signage and these historic information, uh, guidebook terrific. We have our own little freedom trail right here in Cooperstown. Well done. Thanks.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think it looks fabulous too. I really do. Yeah.
Uh, Joe had raised an issue about the guideline, um, by the Cooper Inn, and I wanted you to know we're working with NISIG to correct that. That's actually a NISIG issue at this point.
Yeah. Jim?
Question?
Jim, I'm sorry.
At, at this point in time, I would just like to say that, uh, this seems to be a culmination of 10 years of work, by the village board and, and key people, I will say, key people on the village board and our administrator. Because I, I have to say, without those particular people in those positions at that particular point in time, this village could very well still have the old concrete sidewalks. And it was key, it's, we are so fortunate for that 10-year period that brought us to where we are today. This most spectacular village, and as I've mentioned to Ellen, it has never looked this good, in my opinion, in the, almost ever, in here. I want to say that.
Yeah. And I think it's important, I hope all of you who are out doing your walks still, walk over to, um, Mill Street. Because, um, you know, a lot are our focus, because that's where a lot of the grant funds are, was on our downtown. But Mill Street has a beautiful sidewalk now, um, very exciting, and curb. And, uh, we had already, um, prior to the pandemic, approved the low bid for the repaving there, so that will be done. So it's not just our downtown, but I think the, the village as a whole is, is looking very nice.
Can I chime in for a second?
Oh, yeah.
The street paving for Mill Street will be, uh, right after the 4th of July. And I wanted to ask Terry about the, the parade. Is there anything that the DPW needs to do to make sure this happens? You said some of the street closures.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can talk about it tomorrow and see what the extent is. I know that the, it was brought to the police, uh, department's attention. So whether we have to put out barricades or they're going to take care of it, we'll figure that out probably, well, when you're back Wednesday, I guess, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, I'll be quick. It was brought to my attention, um, and I'm shocked that I hadn't noticed previously, um, the placards, uh, that are down at Council Rock. You know, in this time of movement and social awareness, uh, and racial justice. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the language on there. One of the signs to the left side, um, refers to Native Americans as Indians, and that is racially insensitive and also incorrect. And Jean also had mentioned the other one, um, the language really needs to be updated. I didn't know if that is a, I'm assuming it's a New York State historical thing, um, that the village would have to go through the proper channels to have corrected. But some of the other, uh, New York State historical placards in the village are, do have updated language. Specifically, the one over on Pioneer Street, um, marking the emancipation celebration that took place in the 1800s. So I, um, I'm not sure exactly what the next step is, but I do think those should be replaced, uh, and have the language updated on them. And this might require a larger discussion, and so I'm happy to hear what everyone else thinks.
All right, Richard?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees requests that the state, uh, whichever, whatever the appropriate agency does this. I'd like to get ahead of it, rather than having people come to us and saying, "we're insensitive," saying, "we recognize this and we sent it, we immediately sent it on to who has to take care of it." So that's a motion.
I, I think that, um, what we first need to ascertain is if they are state plaques. Are they? Do you know?
They are, they're the Department of Education.
They were, when they're, okay.
I, I would add to that, that group of things potentially needing rewording the marker for the, um, burial mound that is also within the, the village. It's a newer plaque, um, but it could certainly be much more.
You're talking about the blue kind of sign on the road? Yeah, okay.
I accept that as a friendly amendment. Or correction, whichever.
Jean, as Chair of Parks, I would really like you to kind of take the, the fore on this, would you?
Yep, I will do that.
Great. All right, so the motion is made. Was there a second before we have any more discussion?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
Cindy's seconded. Okay, Joe?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that, um, we be careful about how we're presenting this. This, there's being involved in Indian affairs, and that's what it's been called. There, we might want to investigate, we might want to request, but for us to make the demand about what is politically correct or what's culturally correct, and what we are culturally appropriating or not.
I don't think I use the word "demand" at any point, Joe.
Well, it was a motion to get them changed. It's a question of whether...
No request that the state, the request that the state change them.
Same difference. The question is for the state to review perhaps, but to change to what? As McGuire said a little while ago, there might be a longer conversation to be had about this, but...
Well, that, that would actually be up to the State Department of Education. I think we could reasonably expect that if they were going to make new signs in this day and age, they'd be awfully sensitive. I don't think we have to tell them.
And I'm, I'm also sure that we are not the only municipality making these, um, very appropriate changes. So I would think that they're probably up to speed on not only the language, but are probably familiar with requests from municipalities to do such things.
These are the kinds of things, if I can just say, we shouldn't be assuming these things. I think when we make these kinds of gestures, we should be doing our due diligence, develop some information, present it, so we can make informed decisions.
Cindy, can I ask, um, can I ask you a question? I know, um, when we had certain projects, there were, um, tribal organizations that we had to be in touch with. And I know we have that kind of contact information.
We do.
Would that be sort of for Jean, a first start? And so she can be, um, informed, you know, with some background before, so it's not just a request coming from a board. It's, it's coming with input from a Native American community.
Yeah, we, we've worked for the TEP projects and other projects with both the Mohawk and the Oneida Peoples, and I think that would be a great...
I think that'd be the starting point. Yeah, to work with them.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else? All right, so the motion was made and seconded. All those in favor to, um, having these looked at, um, and with Jean's Parks Committee spearheading this, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right. 7:30. Oh, I would like to say that, um, you know, we've been doing these Zoom meetings now, um, April, May, and June, three months now. And, uh, there's certain things that certainly has moved our discussions along. But I would like, uh, beginning in July, to try to socially distance in the ballroom at 22 Main Street. Get back to meeting in person and having the ability to have a certain number of public present as well. I think we've all missed kind of the public input, and it is important. We did purchase the equipment, so we will still be able to record these meetings. But also returning to an, um, in-person meeting, we are moving away from that requirement to have a word-for-word transcript of these meetings at which the public cannot attend. So, um, just a heads up that, uh, hopefully in July, we will be meeting in person. Again, we'll just have to double-check because we do usually allow the art association to be using the ballroom. But maybe just for the evening, we have our meeting, we could move in six long tables that we can socially distance at and some distant chairs. All right. Anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.